Thank you. We're going to go ahead and call the order, the city council meeting for Monday, July 19, 2021. Can you guys please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Jamie.
Kurt Andrews.
Here.
Mark Bitner.
Here.
Jeff Dalkey is not here. Tracy Coach.
Here.
Bill Leclerc.
Here.
Darla Leclerc.
Here.
Jay Remicker.
Here.
Bonnie Shimilunis.
Here.
Adam Husky.
Here.
Thank you, Jamie. We did not hear from Jeff, so he might be coming in, but I don't think he's not participating remotely, anyway. Moving on to number five, we have no public hearing tonight, so we're going to go right to number six, and that's input from the public. Greg, I'm going to ask you and your staff if you got any phone calls from the public at all, and we'll start that direction before we go from in the audience.
Right, and of course, so council's recently adopted protocol for telephonic input from the public is that, folks, please contact the city manager's office or the city clerk's office by 4:00 p.m. on meeting day with such requests. We have not received any such requests for tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Thank you. So we do have public in the audience, and you're more than welcome to come up to the podium, my right, your left. State your name and address, and you can address anything that's on the agenda tonight or anything you'd like on future agendas. So we'll take a moment and allow the public to come to the podium if they choose to want to do that. Okay, seen none. We'll move on to number seven, council communications. That would be letters and other communications from citizens. Anybody want to share what they might have heard or seen or gotten in mail?
I have.
Bonnie?
I had somebody that wanted to see the police dog do a demonstration at the dog park. Is the chief here? I'd be glad to. The dog park people would are real supportive of that. I used to go there all the time. I know it's not here yet, but that's what he wants.
Okay, I think this is on. So, yeah, it's not here yet, still waiting, and it'll be part of my just brief update about the K-9 program when the city manager starts his report. But when it does come, we'll be more than happy to do presentations all over the place. And in the meantime, if there is something, we could reach out to either Manitowoc or the county. In fact, the sheriff's department has traditionally been doing demonstrations for us for National Night Out, and I'm assuming that they'll do that again for us this year in August. So we'll work on it.
Okay.
Okay?
Great, thank you. Thank you for that.
Oh, could I have one more?
Go ahead, Bonnie, you got another one?
More thing, as long as he's up here. Somebody also asked me about cars that are on lots and wondering about that when they're on too long. He thinks this car is not registered, and maybe some people have a car that they haven't re-registered. What do they do?
Sure. So the ordinance is pretty specific about vehicles on property. You can't have them in your front yard or street-side yard, but if they're on the driveway or anywhere on the property, they have to be registered and operable. If it is something that's not registered or not functioning, they can still have it, but it has to be within an enclosed garage. So if anyone would see anything like that or they have concerns about a vehicle, they can just simply contact the police department at our non-emergency number, and we'll go over and we'll check to see if it's registered, operable, and otherwise in compliance with the ordinance. Okay?
Thank you. Any other emails or letters or comments? Bill?
There was a person who questioned about-
Can you get closer to the mic, please, Bill?
There was a person who questioned me about HUD homes, HUD-owned homes, and where do we go to get information on buying them and so forth?
Is Elizabeth here? The question was regarding a citizen and whether we have the answer now or can get the answer. The citizen wants to know about HUD homes, if they're available and how they can find out. Is that right, Bill? Okay, thank you.
Hi, so if it's on the assessor's list of who owns it, if it's a HUD-owned home or a WIDA-owned home, those are often after a bankruptcy or something of that nature. So usually, on the tax roll, it will say there might be a contact information that we can help find on the public list of the who owns it. Sometimes there is a contact. For HUD-owned homes, sometimes there might be, and if there's a specific address tied to who that person is interested in looking for, maybe we can assist with that contact. Other times, you can actually subscribe to foreclosure lists to find out about those types of homes and then the contact. But if you dig into the public, if you Google HUD homes sometimes, you can dig into that as well. But if someone specifically wants to know, maybe we can find them a contact.
Great. Does that answer your question, Bill?
Yes.
Okay. Any other communications from citizens? Jeff? And by the way, Jeff did join us, so now I'll let the audience know we have a full quorum here.
I was contacted by a citizen about potential help from the pool, the community pool.
Okay.
They need some city help because they're struggling to financially make ends meet, and it might be something we want to look at, too, in-
They presented a couple times to us. Greg, you want to kind of give a recap on what the-
I know that's the Two Rivers Family Swim Center has identified they've got some capital needs and what have you. Council has discussed that before. I know I also had an email communication with council member Wu Husky over the weekend regarding the same. So I think at least for purposes of an update and discussion, we could perhaps, or I'm planning, to include it on next Monday's work session. Private entity, but provides a very valuable service in the community, most notably keeping the city for many years out of the public pool business, which is, I dare say, a service from a budget standpoint. So we will place that on the agenda for at least discussion next week, Monday, at the work session.
Great.
Yeah, Jay had a matter, too, that he had simply shared with the rest of the council. There was no dialogue on it, but likewise, that'll be on there for, by way of an update. Yeah.
Great. Any other communications anybody received? Adam?
I got quite a few. High water on 25th Street backed by SCARE USA. The gravel road there is spewing off water into neighboring properties instead of draining out towards the river. I got a couple calls on that. I got several calls on a sanitary sewer backup with multiple residents on 25th and Wilson Street with lots of damage. Didn't get much help from the city, but would like to see what the city can do for them in regards to that backup because they got like over a foot of water in their basements.
I know I got a report from Mr. McDonald on that. Obviously, we'll refer that to the city's insurer. We also, of course, got six, seven inches of rain that over, even though it's not supposed to go in the sanitary system because of infiltration, we had some extraordinarily high flows last week, Thursday morning. So that will be taken care of appropriately, but it's an insurance company matter. We want to provide good service, but and if there are concerns there, I'd suggest talking with the department head directly about that.
And then I also got the email on the family swim center, and I also got another one about a stop sign at Parkway Boulevard and 45th Street. People are constantly blowing right through them, not stopping.
On 45th, even though they have flashing lights?
Right, so I don't know if there's a, can send an extra patrol there at some point in time and just try to litigate that or limit it, but I think they get a complaint on that, that people are constantly driving right through it.
Hey, thank you, Jay.
I got a couple, too. I got one from the 45th Street guy also. I got one today, and I forwarded to the council about the storage shed and, or storage shed or storage canopy, and we are working on it, and we'll get back to you once we have a definite answer.
Right. It referenced some communication with the inspections office, and we need to have that communication with staff who is out today and tomorrow. I'm not sure. It may have been prohibited under the old ordinance, prohibited under the new. I just don't know enough about it yet.
Right, and I'm just letting them know that we are working on it, and that was it.
Great, thanks. Bill?
I just wanted to mention one of the stop signs on 45th. There's a tree branch hanging pretty much in front of it, not too far away.
One of those two flashing ones?
I think it's one way.
Okay, take a look at that.
Any other communications anybody wants to share? I know I got one, and Adam, it's a couple weeks ago. We put it up at the work session, we'll bring it up again. It was a 2215 on School Street. It was a concern they had with not keeping up with the house and the grass and things not being maintained. They asked the question, can, what can the city do to possibly consider blighting the property or something like that? But I think that inspection was done. We went, I went by, and Adam, you went by as well, and I think Greg, someone, we sent somebody out there to look at it. The grass looks like it's been mowed, but the house still is in some kind of, it needs a little bit of love. So we're going to need to figure out what we can do to help out and address that issue as the properties around it are a little concerned.
Yeah, and as I recall, there's a fully enclosed backyard, and there are some issues about, if it's the right property, about accessing it to do mowing because it's tall as well, but that may require involvement of the court to access a fully enclosed rear yard.
By the way, we do want to hear that when things are, if things are out of line and you've got neighbors or you've got concerns about things, please bring them up. They may be legitimate, they may not be legitimate, but if they're your concerns, there are concerns. So please bring them up if you would. And again, you can reach out to anyone on council, you can reach out to city staff as well. We're all here to help, okay? Greg, you want to say something else?
I would suggest, unless you have contacted city staff and are not satisfied with the response, council, obviously, 24/7, you guys are representing your constituents, but you might start at City Hall with bringing it to the attention of the people that do the enforcement. Sometimes that can be a little faster and a little, a little more appropriate. Not to dissuade people from contacting the council, but staff's here five days a week, generally.
Okay, anything else? All right, seen none. We'll move on to number eight, which is council reports from boards, commissions, or committees. If there's any updates you'd like to share with the rest of council as well as the public. Okay, we'll move on to number nine. Greg, you're up. We're going to go to the city manager report. We have some special invited guests, it sounds like.
Yes, we do. We've reported to the city council, and you've seen it in rec board minutes, gosh, over the past year, about a project, it's two projects, two Eagle Scouts projects at one location on Mariners Trail, just a little bit north of the northernmost wayside on the trail, and two members of local scout troop 927, Coleman Slattery and Joaquin Guines, approached the city, talked to the advisory rec board, cleared it with Friends of Mariners Trail to create a trailside amenity in what has been a kind of a bare, long stretch of trail from that last wayside up to Two Rivers. I think most of you have seen by now the beautiful pergola with the furnishings beneath it that's installed along the trail in that area, and we've gotten incredible feedback from the community. It's beautiful, it's functional. I think we've all seen people making use of it, so I thought it was appropriate tonight to invite each of these young men here, and they are here with family members. And my only task for them at the mic here is to handle any introductions and offer any other comments they might want about the project. I don't know if this qualifies for a separate merit badge or not, or, but certainly, it's a fitting culmination of their Eagle Scout projects. So we do have resolutions for council action, recognizing the work of both of our Eagle Scout candidates here tonight. So if you would, I'd like to invite each of them to at least come up here and stand at the podium, and then as council, and after the reading of the resolution and adoption, which I'm assuming will happen, I bet it'll be a unanimous vote tonight, guys. We're enough past COVID that we could then perhaps have them proceed and shake the hands of each of the council members, which is a return to a tradition that we've been away from for too long. So Joaquin Coleman, if you want to step up here, and I would, I guess first, if you want to recognize any guests in the audience here tonight.
I'm Joaquin Guines, like you said, from troop 927. That's my dad, Ron Guines, and that's my mom, Sally Taylor, and both were a huge help during my project and did a lot to push me towards not procrastinating. So, thank you, and I'll let Coleman do the introductions, but I have a big thank you to the Slattery family because, obviously, I wouldn't be able to do my project without Coleman doing his first, and the Slatterys were kind enough to donate their trailer to transport supplies, and Coleman had an excess of wood that he sold to me at a discount price, discounted price. So thank you for that.
Hello, my name is Coleman Slattery. I'm part of troop 927, built the pergola along Mariners Trail. I have my father in the audience, Matt Slattery, and my mom in the audience, Mary Kay Slattery. They were both very big helps to get me to this point. My dad helped build it, and they both helped push me towards, you know, getting it done. My mom helped with all of the finances, so I both couldn't have done it without them. Special thanks to Mr. Guines and Mrs. Guines to, you know, help build the pergola. We pulled some really, really long nights to get it to the, you know, to get it all completed, because I know one night, we were out there till nine o'clock because we wanted to get it done before our news segment the next day. So it was an all-nighter, but I'm very happy that I was able to get it done and to donate back to the city of Two Rivers. I know it's a beautiful city, and I just want to make it look better, so, yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen. And you're both members of the class of 2022 at Washington, or, excuse me, that dates me, at Two Rivers High School. Don't anybody be sending Facebook comments or messages. Two Rivers, Two Rivers High School. So, Mr. President, I would ask that council take up in the order listed in the agenda the resolutions recognizing our two Eagle Scout candidates.
All right, so we'll start with the first one. We're looking for a motion to read and adopt the resolution for Coleman Slattery. Can I get a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Jeff, if I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jay. Any discussion? Greg, why don't we go ahead and read it, and then we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote?
Resolution: Recognizing Eagle Scout candidate Coleman Slattery for community contribution. Whereas the rank of Eagle Scout is the highest achievement to be achieved in the Boy Scouts of America, and whereas Two Rivers High School class of 2022 student Coleman Slattery is a member of Boy Scout troop 927 and candidate for Eagle Scout, and whereas one component required to achieve the rank of Eagle Scout is to plan, develop, and give leadership to others in a project helpful to a religious institution, school, or community, and whereas Coleman Slattery identified an opportunity for a community project in the city of Two Rivers along Mariners Trail, and whereas planning for the project required coordination with the community group Friends of Mariners Trail, and whereas city of Two Rivers Parks and Recreation and Public Works Departments assisted in preparing the community project site, excuse me, and whereas Coleman Slattery constructed a pergola along Mariners Trail overlooking Lake Michigan with furnishings constructed by fellow Eagle Scout candidate Joaquin Guines, and whereas this project, completed in July 2021, is an amenity along the Two Rivers portion of Mariners Trail, it will be appreciated, enjoyed, and enjoyed by trail users for years to come. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Two Rivers does hereby express its sincere appreciation to Coleman Slattery for his generous contribution to the city of Two Rivers, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be provided to Coleman Slattery in recognition of this community contribution dated this 19th day of July 2021.
Great. We have a roll call, Jamie, to approve that resolution?
Kurt Andrews.
Aye.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
Jeff Dalkey.
Aye.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Jay Remicker.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunis.
Aye.
Adam Husky.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Let's give them a hand.
We'll give each their- Thank you. We're going to go ahead and ask for a resolution or a motion to read and adopt the resolution for Eagle Scout candidate Joaquin Guines for community contributions. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Jay. Do I have a second? I'll second. I've got a lot of seconds. Okay, Jamie, take your pick. I think it was Adam. So we have a motion and a second. Greg, you did such a good job reading the first one. Can you read the second one, please?
I'll give it a whack. I'll give it a try. Resolution: Recognizing Eagle Scout candidate Joaquin Guines for community contribution. Whereas the rank of Eagle Scout is the highest achievement to be achieved in the Boy Scouts of America, and whereas Two Rivers High School class of 2022 student Joaquin Guines is a member of Boy Scout troop 927 and candidate for Eagle Scout, and whereas one component required to achieve the rank of Eagle Scout is to plan, develop, and give leadership to others in a project helpful to a religious institution, school, or community, and whereas Joaquin Guines identified an opportunity for a community project in the city of Two Rivers along Mariners Trail, and whereas planning for the project required coordination with the community group Friends of Mariners Trail and the city's advisory recreation board, and whereas city of Two Rivers Parks and Recreation and Public Works Departments assisted in preparing the community project site, and whereas Joaquin constructed furnishings for a pergola along Mariners Trail overlooking Lake Michigan, that pergola constructed by fellow Eagle Scout candidate Coleman Slattery, and whereas this project, completed in July 2021, is an amenity along the Two Rivers section of Mariners Trail that will be enjoyed and appreciated by trail users for years to come. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Two Rivers does hereby express its sincere appreciation to Joaquin Guines for his generous contribution to the city of Two Rivers, and be it further resolved a copy of this resolution be provided to Joaquin Guines in recognition of this community contribution, and again dated this 19th day of July 2021.
Great, thank you. Jamie, can we get a roll call again?
Jeff Dalkey.
Aye.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Jay Remicker.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunis.
Aye.
Adam Husky.
Aye.
Kurt Andrews.
Aye.
Nice, thanks again.
And in addition to the resolutions, a resident reached out to me last week who was so appreciative of what she had seen done on the project. She said, "I don't know what to do, but these young men or their troops could maybe make use of QuickTrip cards." So that person, who's, I know, loves Mariners Trail, wanted to forward these as a token of appreciation. This is from an anonymous person in the community that, A, loves Mariners Trail, and B, really loves what you guys have done out there. So make sure I give each of the right resolutions. Coleman, yours. Joaquin, yours. And after running the gamut and shaking hands with our council members, if you want to return up here, our council president, Mr. Andrews, and our Parks and Rec Director, Terry Vosters, we'd like to have them join with you for a photo op before we get you out of here. And you've, I knew at least Joaquin's got a meeting tonight. You got the same meeting, Coleman? Then you're on out of here, onto your next endeavor. So if you would, starting with Mr. Bitner, if our council members could extend their congratulations, right around the front there. Thank you. And while they're gathering for the photo op, one more round of applause, not just for these two guys, but their troops and the parents. Thank you so much. Joaquin, best. Thank you. A little further, because Kurt and Coleman are having a halo effect.
It's natural.
Sport clips, right? They do that? Wish we could start every meeting that way, Mr. President. Great project. Next up, we have representative, one or more, I'm not sure, representatives of American Legion Post 165 to advise the community of the opportunities for appropriate flag disposal with drop-off locations that the post provides around the community, and to inform folks about an upcoming flag retirement ceremony where, again, our worn and tattered American flags are appropriately disposed of with respect. So, Christian, welcome.
Great. Anyways, so, well, actually, before I even get started, I want to thank all you council members for stepping up and doing what you're doing, because that's really great, and those scout project, you know, it's exciting living in Two Rivers again, you know? It's like I drove by that this morning in the Gator to go clean the grills on Memorial Drive, and I was like, when did that get there, you know? That's really impressive, and those guys can be proud of that. But anyways, getting back to business here, we're going to be having a flag retirement ceremony, Post 165. That's what we did. We used to do it in the back of the vets' club, but now, as everybody knows, the vets' club kind of sold their building, and they're in the same boat we are. We don't have a physical location anymore. So the city was nice enough to let us use the Ball Diamond at Noshodo Park, and I think we've been there now for the last four years. And it's actually a pretty good setup for doing that. I mean, we're still new at this, so we're learning and getting better at it every year, and we're trying to make it into like a real formal thing, like some posts do. Most of the time, they retire flags on Flag Day. We like to do it in summer because, hell, no, Flag Day's still winter here in May, so. But anyways, I still have a few people in contact. I think I, I think the police chief is here. He should probably know about that. That'd be on August 4th, and we're going to be having a meeting of the guys that are going to be doing the ceremony at 5:00 to get everybody acclimated in what they're doing, and then we're going to have our meeting at 6:00, and then the flag retirement is going to be at 7:00. That'll be at the Ball Diamond in the Noshodo Park, and we didn't tell anybody. One year, we had the fire guys show up because it's acrid black smoke. It's pretty bad, and then the stuff melts, so. And it coordinated with the city and the rec department. They give us a place to dispose of the remains because they have to be buried, and that's pretty cool. And I've been doing it for four years now myself, and taking it over from some of the guys that got older. But if any guys have any questions, you're more than welcome to come on down, and if the public has a flag that they haven't put in the bin, and they have it laying in their table or whatever, and you want to just come down, just hand it to one of their veterans, or we're going to have scouts there, it's going to be some VFW guys there. We work together with the honor guard and all that, so if you have a flag that you'd like to retire in person, you're more than welcome to come on down and do that, and we'll accommodate you. So, does anybody have any questions for me, or?
Again, Chris, that's Wednesday, August 4th.
It's always the first Wednesday of the month. We can have it coincide with our monthly meeting. We usually meet up here, but we're going to meet out there at this time.
If you're bringing a flag, maybe be there by quarter to 7:00 or so on the 4th?
Even after it's going, I mean, if you just show up with a flag, just walk on up, and we ain't going to bite, you know?
There is a disposal of container in the front stairway here at City Hall.
Once again, the disposal containers, one of them is down underneath the main entrance of the, of the City Hall, right as you walk in the front door. It's a red, white, and blue can off to the left side of the stairs. There's another one, it's a barrel that's at the pick-and-save. That one's usually got a lot of flags in it. And then there's one at the fire station, but COVID, it didn't have a whole lot of flags on that one, so pick-and-save was the winner, but not like we're racing or anything, but some of the flags that come to me are pretty sad. And I usually post it on Facebook, and I share it to your site on the City Hall site or whatever, so anybody have any questions for me? I was told I had to be here by my vice commander, so I didn't want to miss that. First of all, we want to thank you for everything you do and for the reverence you give the flag that we, people fought so hard for and give us our freedom. give the flag that we, people fought so hard for and give us our freedom, and we do the right thing by disposing of it correctly. So thank you for that. Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. By way of status and update reports for tonight, first off, congratulations to everybody involved with Brian Lee Day, which is a week ago last Saturday, July 10. Massive hit, very well received, amazing musical talent on display, couldn't ask for better weather and a great turnout. Thank you, Councilmember Darla Leclair, who was in on the ground floor of this, reached out to Bethany, Brian Lee's widow, presented the City Council resolution proclaiming Brian Lee Day. Thanks to Two Rivers Main Street for providing the organization for the event, the friends and contemporaries of Brian Lee who came here to perform, and it was a full day of amazing entertainment. All indications are there's a real desire in the community for it to be the first annual Brian Lee Blues Fest or something to that effect, and I think we've had some contacts with sponsors interested in carrying it forward. I'll just share that, because I was not here, I was out of town the weekend of the event, but Monday after, Bethany, Mrs. Lee stopped, Mrs., I'm sorry, Brian Lee's wife, stopped by City Hall and just really expressed her appreciation for the event. It was heartfelt. She wants to be part of the event ongoing, and that made it all worthwhile. So thanks to everybody involved on that. It was Two Rivers really shone on that day.
It was great. Hey, by the way, I got a quick question for Darla. Darla, did you get a set of Brian Lee's CDs? Because we were auctioning them off for everybody else. Did you end up getting a set?
No, I did not.
Well, good. I've got a set I want to give you. Thank you for everything you did.
Great. Thank you for what you did.
Well, thank you very much. I'll tell you, it was a real, it was a real experience being involved in this, and the reception, like Greg said, there's people who expressed interest in having this continue on. And the old saying, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. I think we kind of found our niche as to how our music fest can be going out from here. And I know that, well, I spoke with some of the musicians who had traveled from out of state who were here, and they said that they would come back. So we'll see what happens for next year, but we're going to be talking about it as a group with Main Street, and we'll keep you up to date as to what the plans turn out to be. And thank you very much, Kurt. That was really nice of you.
Just a follow-up report, and we know Councilmember Husky mentioned some of the aftermaths of the storm. Last Thursday morning, early morning hours, different areas of the city got anywhere from five to seven inches of rain. Most of you know it, you heard it sweep through here. Down at the wastewater plant, that meant that stormwater in raw sewage and with a whole lot of groundwater, stormwater, was coming into the plant. It had been flowing at about 2,500 gallons per minute, which equates to 3.6 million gallons a day. The flow very quickly went up to over 8,000 gallons per minute, which on an extended basis is about 11.5 million gallons per day. Those extraordinarily high flows did result in an overflow at the plant, and I bet you at quite a few wastewater plants in the region, a total of only 5,250 gallons of untreated effluent did flow into a storm sewer and onto the river in Lake Michigan untreated. That was appropriately reported to Wisconsin DNR. There was a notice published per the requirements of the law in, I believe, Saturday's Herald Times reporter. It's obviously something we strive to avoid. It's a very rare occurrence that did happen. To minimize it, because again, the city takes those responsibilities, and it pales in comparison to what was cascading down the river past us from all of the upstream runoff and what might have happened in other larger urban areas to our south, which tend to overflow. There was a blockage in one of the major interceptors with some material that apparently was dislodged by the high flows. There was some resulting impacts on residences and businesses that we are aware of. Not going to say it was a once-in-a-lifetime event, but it was a rare event to get that much rain in such a short period. You know, towns with hills and valleys are pretty, but this is one of those occasions I was grateful that Two Rivers is relatively flat. We didn't have a lot of street flooding. The infrastructure handled it. Not a lot, not really anything in the way of damage incurred at city facilities. What could be? Yeah, and that was my backyard rain gauge. I was starting to question it until I saw all the Facebook posts around town where all kinds of people had six or seven inches of rainfall.
I can personally say we added to the shipwrecks in Two Rivers because our boats sank.
Ah.
So if that's, Jeff, if you're keeping track of the official thing at the library, you can add the shipwreck off the East Twin River, but we did manage to get it out.
There's a storm like that since Gilligan and the skipper ran into that.
Yes.
Some of you remember. Street reconstruction projects for this summer continue. 24th Street, half of it got paved on July 13. Vinton, the paving subcontractor, is scheduled to be back on-site July 22nd, weather permitting, to pave the north side of the street. And then the various handwork, including driveway approaches, sidewalk work, corner ramps, that sort of thing, will be starting, we expect, the week of July 26. So things are taking shape on the 24th Street project. And there's the crews laying concrete. Over on 25th and Madison Streets, by July 23rd, the contractor is scheduled to complete the underground work with sanitary sewer water and storm sewer infrastructure. Grading and gravelling operations there are supposed to start, that's again on 25th, the week of July 26th. They expect to do the paving work in August, and end of July, they'll be just starting on the three blocks of underground utility Madison. Updated. A lot of personnel, a lot of equipment mobilized and at work on those projects. Next up, I'd like to invite Chief Kolmeyer forward to talk about the status of the Police Department fundraising for the K-9 program. He can reference the slides we have up on the screen as well as further updates for council and the community.
There we go. So on May 10th, the City Council approved the Police Department to start fundraising and start a new program, the K-9 program. Again, thank you. On the next day, the very next day, I was on the radio on Be My Guest, and that's when we really kind of kicked off our fundraising drive. And since that time, about 10 weeks ago, we've steadily been getting a lot of donations from a lot of people. And this is just a couple of pictures. I'm sure if you've been watching our Facebook page, you've seen them on there quite regularly, and there's way too many to mention. But I just want to say thank you to, excuse me, all the citizens and civic groups and individuals that have come in and donated or bought a T-shirt. I really appreciate all of the support, and again, thank you, thank you very much. So up here, again, just a couple of the pictures. If you notice in front of City Hall, we have a thermometer there, kind of giving a gauge as to where we're at with our project. We're at about, actually, this picture was taken before we've had some recent donations, so we're actually at about 38% right now. So things are moving along. And every week, I wouldn't say it's, you know, the same address, things ebb and flow, but we're at about $1,900 a week is what it's been averaging. Obviously, some higher, some lower. Every day, there's, somebody's donating, and so we've got a little ways to go yet before we hit that second 50,000 community match that we're looking for. I would say when we get to about half or three-quarters, at the half or three-quarter mark, is when we would start looking to actually schedule the training for the dog, pick out a dog, because we would be fairly sustainable at that point. And so hopefully, by the end of the year, we'll have a dog on the road, and we can do a lot of presentations and introduce the dog to everyone. Some of the fundraising efforts that we have been doing, again, the T-shirt that's been going very well, we've ordered 150 of them so far, and we've probably sold over 100. The Rotary's been very good to us. They've brought them to some of their special events. We have plans to bring them to a couple of other local businesses very soon. Of course, the Two Rivers Clothing Company has helped us out and has donated funds and is helping us with the T-shirts, so more sizes and different styles are available there. Once we get the dog, we would be looking at plush toys that would look like the dog or somewhat like the dog, maybe have the dog's name on it, change the T-shirt style and color. So those are some of the plans that we have moving forward. I've been approached by various other businesses to do fundraising events, and we're planning those. So it's been a very exciting time, and it's been, again, just awesome to see all the support in the community and from everyone. If you, I don't think I missed anything, but if you have any questions at all, feel free.
Do you have any plans to do like a dine for a canine type thing with the Two Rivers area restaurants?
Yeah, actually, Port Sandy Bay reached out to us and said that they were wanting to do that with us, so.
Okay.
That'll probably be the first.
Great, that'd be awesome.
Yeah, I think so.
Chief, where can the T-shirts be purchased right now?
Yes, so right now, probably Two Rivers Clothing Company because the Police Department front window is closed, but otherwise, Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 4:30 PM, they would be available at the Police Department window. They're available at the Two Rivers Clothing Company as well. Long-sleeve hoodies are available at the Two Rivers Clothing Company. And then, like I said, there's going to be a couple other businesses, some of the, we're looking at some of the animal-type businesses, grooming and so forth, and we've had some reach out from them. Actually, thanks to Councilman Bitner.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Chief. So again, getting close to $20,000 on that goal of 50 overall. Great community response. Per action of the council, that is July 5 meeting, which culminated last Tuesday, the 13th, we now have a signed purchase agreement between the city and TA Properties LLC for the sale of the property at 2023 Washington Street. That agreement provides for a purchase price of $10,000. Probably even more significant, though, calls for an investment of at least $100,000 into this long vacant property by the purchaser. Again, just as a refresher, a reminder, this property was acquired by the city in April of 2020 specifically for redevelopment purposes. It was about 10 years tax delinquent. Manitowoc County was in a position, as counties uniquely are under state statute, to take the property for back taxes. The county, our county typically does not, especially if there are anything that might be a brownfield site. There is provision in the law, however, where counties can assign their rights under the INREM or INREM foreclosure or foreclosure for delinquent property taxes to another local unit. We worked things out with an agreement approved by City Council between the city, the county, and Wisconsin DNR regarding the property. And things are moving forward, so we'll keep you updated. There's, the agreement provides time for the prospective purchaser to put those development plans together, bring them back to Plan Commission for approval. But we're headed in the right direction on that one, and very, very happy to show it with a sold sign up, be even more happy when we can erase the slide from the deck and no longer be showing that building, but see it return to productive use. So, thank you. Thank you, council, and thank you to Elizabeth, our Community Development Director, and Amy Townsend at Berkshire Hathaway Real Estate, our Realtor for that property. Playground equipment update. New playground equipment was recently installed at Riverside Park on 14th Street. That's featured in the photo here. That was a nice investment, budgeted in part last year, completed and installed this year. We are still waiting on installation of the zip line at Noshodo Park. I can assure you, our Parks and Rec Director is in frequent, constant, and firm contact with the vendor for that. They were mobilized to do some work, hit high groundwater in the park, went elsewhere. We were hoping they'd be back in time for the 4th of July. This week, they've called off on the install due to the extremely wet conditions. The latest estimate, latest promise is that they will be back here next week for an installation. And I don't know if the, Terry, I don't know if the seat has come in or not, because the ultimate frustration would be if it gets installed and the seat, which is on back order, doesn't come.
It's here.
It's here. Okay, good. So there is a seat for when that zip line gets put in, so stay tuned on that one. Update on the fleet leasing program with Enterprise Fleet Leasing. Council authorized 21 vehicles for a major step on the upgrading of our fleet with leased vehicles, after considering that as part of budget last year. And we hurried to get those orders in, you know, in December, well before the factory cutoffs, but then ran headlong into the vehicle shortage that COVID and the global microchip shortage and everything else have caused. At this point, we're actually pleased to say that we've received nine vehicles thus far, and you see some of them there as they were delivered here to the City Hall parking lot. Nine have been canceled by the manufacturer. We won't be getting them this year. We do hope to get three more yet this year for a total of 12 vehicles, not 21, but 12 vehicles replaced. And of course, we've heard Equinoxes, and I think, pickups if I'm looking at the, right. And work is coming together on putting together orders for the 2022 vehicle replacement. You'll recall there were already projections for that, but of course, the delays this year or cancellation of some of the production will impact that. So we'll be back in the context of the budget process to identify the next phase for 2022. Lester Public Library, one of the investments that was made during COVID time and covered through a reimbursement under the Federal Routes to Recovery Program. That was the new drive-through window at Lester Public Library. I'd asked Director Dawson for an update, and he shared that in the month of June, 1,050 items were circulated to patrons by way of the drive-through window. That was about 11% of the 9,600-plus items that were circulated in June at the library. And I don't know about you, but I've heard firsthand from a number of library users that are very big fans of the drive-through service. Of course, we're all looking forward to welcoming back Snow Fest, a beloved Two Rivers event, this coming weekend, July 23rd, Friday the 23rd through Sunday the 25th. Would remind council members that you're all invited to participate in the parade that on Saturday morning departs the area of the Public Works Yard at 11:00 AM and runs the parade route. I know Jamie had notes, I think, from the last meeting, but could we get a fresh show of hands? And I know Jay's driving a fire truck for the town at Two Rivers Fire Department, but again, if we could, a show of hands of those of you that anticipate being in attendance in the parade. Okay. See, and Kurt, and Jeff, and Darla, and Bonnie, and Bill. And, okay, very good. And we'll get an email out this week with more specifics as to what we've got lined up for vehicles for you, or whether some of us will be walking, just what's going to happen with the parade. Of course, there's also a full lineup of live music all three days, food, drink, carnival rides, and games. A lot of excitement in the community as Snow Fest is back, and we thank the Socksey Brothers for really being the driving force, and a lot of community support in bringing this back. Of course, we've still got a lot of summer ahead of us. Remind you about the remaining lineup for Bands on the Beach down at the Rotary Pavilion at Noshodo Park, Music in the Park downtown, both on Thursday nights and the acoustic series on Saturdays. Too much to list here, but if you want to drill down on the detail, again, go to explore tworivers.com. One other footnote I wanted to share with council and the community, we were saddened to hear the passing of two of our retired water and light electric linemen. Both of them passed away on Saturday, July 17. Robert Blaha, who had 34 years in the department as a lineman, Ross Blaha's dad, so we extend our sympathies to Ross and family. He passed away on Saturday morning. He had retired in '96 from the department. And Bill Monk also passed away Saturday. A lot of folks know, knew Bill, lived on the east side in his work years. A lot of folks know, knew Bill, lived on the east side in his work years and retirement years, another great guy at the age of 81. He passed on Saturday morning, so we got a heck of a line crew in heaven because they just got a couple of great additions to it. And we thank, obviously, remember both of those gentlemen for their service and extend our sympathies to the families, both the Blahas and the Monkas. And that's my report for tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Greg. Is there any legislative updates that you want to?
Uh, boy, to be honest with you, no. The governor did veto, and I haven't heard anything about an override vote. He vetoed the proposed elimination of the state's personal property tax, which was included in the budget that passed out of the Assembly. And I don't know about any of you, I haven't heard anything on the maintenance of effort. That was a separate bill from the budget. Maintenance of effort for local spending on protective services, police and fire. I've not seen an update on that. Jay?
Just got to ask the question for that leasing program. We are just paying for what we're getting, correct?
Correct. Correct. We, the, yeah, the, we're only paying for what we're getting, and of course, the leases are commencing at a later date than we had figured. Yep. And we're, very shortly, we'll see what the results are of turning some of the vehicles back into Enterprise for resale, where we have a guaranteed minimum based on their, their estimates. We've got some real collector cars. If you're in need of a 1994 Ford Taurus, we got a, we got a couple of them that are going to be available. I don't think Enterprise expressed an interest, but if you want a 94 Taurus, either for parts or quasi-reliable transportation.
That be the vehicles we ride in the parade? I'm just kidding.
You know?
Or push.
You know? That, that might just be okay. I'd suggest make sure the windows are down when you start the parade route, because neither one of them has AC.
Just a thought.
Yep. And the more stout of us, I'll speak for myself, might end up pushing if we have to. Otherwise, on that, they're great cars. Great cars. Thank you, Greg.
Greg, if I could add two comments, just real quickly, just it's outside of our city limits, but the Shoto County Park, the facility is now operational and open. They raised the level, they put in their dock, and Saturday I went kayaking, it was full and beautiful. Lots of people on a beautiful river came down to Two Rivers. Second, thanks to Terry and your team for keeping paddler's park dock level. I encourage our local citizens, I think they're younger, but the safety rack on the kayak and canoe is not to be held or hung from, and I think what it's doing, Terry, that's what's tipping the angle of the dock, because we've already fixed it several times to make it level. But hanging on that kayak safety rack does tip the slope of the dock, so, but it's available, you can still use it when it's tipped, but we've got a great Two River system here to enjoy, and I encourage the community to get out, canoe, kayak, and use the water.
Oh, I might too, under legislative intergovernmental work continues on, on seeing if we can get a renewal or a new version of our Tourism Services Agreement with the City of Manitowoc and the Manitowoc Area Visitor Convention Bureau. Mr. Bittner, City Attorney Bruce, and myself attended a meeting at Manitowoc City Hall today. Our working group, which doesn't contain a quorum of either Room Tax Commission nor the Visitor Convention Bureau Board, was expanded today to include representatives of the, of the Visitor Convention Bureau Board. We'll be meeting again in two weeks here at Two Rivers City Hall, so. We keep trying. We've, we've got some challenges, but I think it's fair to say both cities recognize that we're much stronger promoting together than separately.
To remind everybody, that's, we're targeting September 1st to get at least a draft agreement, correct?
Correct. The current agreement expires year-end, and all parties have agreed we should have a new one in place by September 1st if we're going to do it.
Okay, great. Speaking of Two Rivers, we, Whitney just got done finishing these. I gave one to every one of the council people. This is for hotels and lobbies and for where people go, whether it's at Point Beach Park, but it talks about Two Rivers on the back and highlights four or five of our great assets. So just look out for those because we're trying to continue to promote those throughout the 50-mile or 100-mile radius here and draw people in the Two Rivers. So I'll finish that, as long as we're talking about tourism. Let's move to the consent agenda, number 10. We've got a presentation of minutes. We've got two of those from the regular council meeting from July 6th, special session of the City Council, July 12th, a motion to waive the reading and adopt those minutes. We have application and petitions. A couple of applications, or actually one for a temporary Class B license for Brewfest, and we also have one for the youth sports war on the shore for a temporary Class B. And then we have an application for commercial garbage haulers license. That's a recommendation for approval, and that's with waste management. So the recommended action of the application and petitions is to motion to approve the applications and authorize the issuance of those licenses. On reports, we have four minutes of meetings. On department reports, we have 11 different ones, a motion to receive and file those, and we have a summary of verified bills for the month of July 2021 for $1,533,596 and 85 cents, and a motion to receive and place that on file. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda with the various actions recommended. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve this consent agenda with the various actions recommended.
Thank you, Jay. Do I have a second?
Second, man.
Thank you, Jeff. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to number 11, City Council formal items. We have a handful of resolutions and ordinances tonight, guys, so let's start with the first one. A is a resolution upon retirement of Kay, is that Nooker?
Nooker.
Is that how you say that? Office manager, Water and Light Department. Again, I'm looking for a motion to read and adopt that resolution. We'll do the motion in a second, and then we'll allow you to go ahead and read it, okay? Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mark. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Adam. Any discussion, or why don't we just go ahead and let you read it, and then we'll do a roll call, okay?
Fantastic.
Thank you, sir.
Resolution upon retirement. Whereas Kay Nooker began her employment with the City of Two Rivers Electric Department on July 18th, 2011, as administrative assistant, and whereas Mrs. Nooker retired on July 8th, 2021, completing a distinguished career with the City of Two Rivers Electric Department with assistance to the Water Department in service to our community, and whereas Kay was a key member to, of the department in establishing a number of procedures and instrumental in document management and timekeeping, and whereas Mrs. Nooker always exhibited a willingness to assist customers with energy rebates and other focus on energy programs, and whereas Kay was a key member for organizing the Water and Light Electronic Recycling Event. Each year was a success under Kay's guidance and willingness to coordinate. She also assisted in other annual events such as Community Care Days and Public Power Week. And now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Two Rivers does hereby express its appreciation to Kay Nooker for her distinguished service to Two Rivers Water and Light, its customers, and the City of Two Rivers for the past 10 years, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be provided to Kay Nooker with congratulations and best wishes for a happy and healthy retirement dated this 19th day of July 2021.
Thank you for reading that. Should we do a roll call on this?
Jeff Dalkey.
Aye.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Jay Remicker.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunis.
Aye.
Adam Wuhusky.
Aye.
Kurt Andrews.
Aye.
Mark Bittner.
I know Kay's not here, but hopefully she's watching. Let's give her a hand. Let's move on to number B. Thank you for that. Ordinance to amend the Municipal Code Title III, Chapter 5 of Municipal Code related to lost and abandoned property. A motion to waive that reading and adopt that ordinance. And who is, we'll do a motion in a second. Who's going to help read that? Greg, is that going to be the chief?
Actually, yes. Well, the chief can certainly offer any explanations. This relates to the options available to the city for disposal of, of surplus and abandoned property. You've got a memo from Chief Colmeyer explaining the reason for the requested amendment along with a copy of the amendment.
Okay, great. I'm looking for a motion to waive the reading and adopt that, and then we'll hear from the chief. Do I have a motion?
No, move.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jay. Chief, you are up. We got the memo in front of us. It's page number 94, 95, and 96 in your packages.
Yes, so this is a ordinance that, that is in place to deal with the property from the City of Two Rivers, mainly property that's recovered by the Police Department. It can be recovered under various circumstances. Maybe it was found property, might have been in relation to some type of crime that we weren't able to return or find the rightful owner, or otherwise we couldn't return. And so there has to be an appropriate method for disposal of that property, which is outlined partially by the State of Wisconsin, and that's part of the reference material that I, should be included in your pack, and that's under Wisconsin Statute 66.0139. It just talks about what the procedure is. And when you read that statute, which I won't get into all of it, it indicates that if you're going to do anything, anything other than have a sale by auction of this property, it has to be specified by your municipal ordinance. So that is the reason that we're, I'm before you today, is to make a modification to our ordinance so that it allows for some latitude to dispose of property in a number of, of ways. So if you look at the ordinance itself and under the highlighted section, it is changing the worded wording to allow not just a sale by auction, but specifically such disposals shall be done through sale open to the public. For the purpose of this ordinance, sale open to the public may include a physical auction, and these are the additions, electronic auction, sale through social media platforms or other electronic means, access to which is available to the general public. And then it includes other city properties. So the statute and the original ordinance talked primarily about the Police Department, said department, referring to the Police Department. We routinely have other property from other city departments that are no longer usable, functional, and we auction that off as well. So it might be things from the Rec Department or DPW or the, or the Fire Department, and we'll auction those off as well. So just kind of cleaning up the ordinance to make sure that we're following the state statute and we have it documented appropriately. So what does the electronic auction, sale through social media and that, and all that mean? It just means that we've had some success when we weren't able to sell things at the physical auctions we've had over the years, and the last physical auction we had was in 2019. We did not have one in 2020 for obvious reasons. When we didn't sell certain items there, we put them on Manitowoc Buy and Sell. I'm, I'm not even sure if we hit Craigslist or something, but Manitowoc Buy and Sell, and we were actually very successful and got fairly good money for things that we probably, well, we, first of all, didn't get anything at all for at auction and would have normally just disposed of and got nothing for it. And so we're looking to do that more regularly rather than hold a physical auction. As I note in my memo, holding a physical auction is quite labor-intensive for the staff. It's costly as far as staff time just on regular hours, and then to man, or I should say staff the auction on usually a Saturday. It takes a considerable amount of time organizing it, putting all the things together, and then, and then again, actually run it. And then there's usually a good amount of stuff that's left over. Thankfully, we've had some local business owners that are, are very helpful with the bicycles when we have a lot of bicycles left over, and, and then local area scrappers that have taken a lot of our metal, so. So we have, in previous years, done some electronic version of auction. It was still considered public auction because it was, it was an auction platform, but it was electronic. It was called propertyroom.com. And at one time, for many years, they would come here, it didn't cost us anything, they would pick up all of our stuff, they would take pictures of it, they would market it, they would sell it online, and then we would get half of whatever they sold it for, and there was no cost to us for any of that. Well, as time had gone on, and when gas prices kind of were hitting their high, then we started getting some costs that were getting shifted to us, and then ultimately because of our agency size, they wanted to do auctions in place, and so that kind of put the burden back on us to do a lot of, a lot of the legwork. So again, we're just looking to open up the opportunities and options to get rid of the property. The important thing here, I should say, is that it is available to the general public because that's a major component, and that's something that, whether it's in ordinance or not, I feel very strongly about, that the general public should be able to have access to it. It's not on a specific website or platform that you have to necessarily sign up for or that you otherwise might not have ready access to on the internet.
So that's the change. Any discussion or questions for the chief while we're in discussion before we go to do a roll call?
Chief, how does, how does the general public know when it starts?
Yeah, so what we will do is we will have information on our Facebook page and also on the website as to where they can go for city property. So whenever they want, and we do get inquiries every once in a while, particularly in the spring, asking us, oh, when are you going to hold your auction? And so we will direct people to our website, which will indicate where we are selling those things.
I have a question. How much more work is it to do now if you go on Marketplace or Facebook? Because you talked about the amount of hours it takes to actually manage the auction. Who's doing that in your group to at least post those, send the pictures, and get that set up? Because that takes time, too.
It does. So yeah, unfortunately, there isn't anything that doesn't take any time when it comes to disposition of this property, but because we can do it as it's occurring a little bit more, and it's not one huge arduous task, it can be spread out and more manageable. But to ask, answer your question specifically, right now, it's one of our secretaries.
Fair enough, just making sure. The public knows it doesn't come free when we have to dispose of this stuff. It does cost us money. Any questions? Great. Jamie, you want to do a roll call for us?
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Jay Remicker.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunis.
Aye.
Adam Wuhusky.
Aye.
Kurt Andrews.
Aye.
Mark Bittner.
Aye.
Chief, and thank you for looking at different ways as technology changes of disposing this stuff to the public as legally we have to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to C, noise ordinance waiver request from Wisconsin Heat Softball, July 23rd through, I think that's the 24th, unless it's 244.
The 24th, correct. Thank you.
Okay, through the 24th, 2021, until 11:00 p.m. at Vietnam's Veteran Park. I'm looking for a motion to approve the request as submitted. The request is in our hands or in our package at number 97. All it is, is a simple request to go to 11 o'clock. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Jay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jeff. Any discussion on this one? Seeing none, it is a noise ordinance. Jamie, you got to go to work again, so go ahead and do a roll call, please.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Jay Remicker.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunis.
Aye.
Adam Wuhusky.
Aye.
Kurt Andrews.
Aye.
Mark Bittner.
Aye.
Jeff Dalkey.
Aye.
Tracy Coach.
Thank you. Motion passes. Going to D, City Managers Appointments and Reappointments to Boards, Committees, and Commissions. You have two of them here you want to bring up, Greg? We have those in front of us, too, correct?
Yes, these are both appointments to the Committee on Aging. Very happy to recommend Pamela Stevens. Pam has just joined us in the audience tonight. In addition to giving Chris DeCoke a direct order to be here at tonight's meeting, as we heard earlier, as, as Vice Commander of the Legion, Pam is also a volunteer who assists with Meals on Wheels delivery and would be a very good addition to Committee on Aging. Second appointment I'm recommending is Kim Graves. You all know Kim, our retired former city clerk, who also is actively volunteering on a weekly basis over at the Senior Center. So would like to recommend the appointment of Pamela and Kim, two terms expiring on, gee, May 1st, 2023, and May 1st, 2024, respectively.
Great. Do I have a motion to approve the appointments as Greg outlined and recommended?
Full motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second? It was good job, Tracy, seconding that one. Any discussion before we go into voting? Okay, seeing none, you got two good candidates there, Greg. Thank you for serving them up. All in favor of approving this, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you. The motion carries, and thank you for volunteering your time and being on the committees. We could always use people on committees, please. Continue to volunteer. E, visibility concerns at the intersection of Twenty-Fourth Street and Forest Avenue. We have a recommended action. It's really for information only. We've got quite a few emails on this, and some concerns in the last couple of weeks on the, on the issue. And I know the road's still being constructed, correct?
Yes.
So we really didn't want to take action necessarily, but the matter is given preliminary discussion at the Special Public Works Committee meeting on July nineteenth. Do you want to give an update on that?
Sure. We had a Special Public Works Committee meeting right before tonight's city council meeting. And as everyone knows, Twenty-Fourth Street right now is under construction, so there is going to, people have to find an alternate place to park. And right now, because it, due to the ongoing construction in that vicinity, staff recommends, and also the Public Works Committee concurs, that discussion of this matter take place at a later time, probably in, at a meeting in October, with advance notice sent to the neighborhood residents. And we'll have the discussion at that time. But it'll give them an opportunity to, to really take a look at the situation without having all those additional cars parked there, so we can see what the, the true issue is, and then go from there.
So it might be exaggerated right now. We really don't know what would be normal. So you want to come back and have that discussion later on with the public in the neighborhood?
Right.
Okay, so that's really, there's not an action item from the council as much as an information item for the citizens as well as from your, your committee. So thank you.
And Mr. McDonald has spoken to the gentleman that sent the original email. As I understand it, that gentleman was in concurrence on deferring this. The other thing I think we've recognized, as we discussed this, along that stretch of Forest Avenue, especially the streets coming in from the west, the intersecting streets on the west, and in each of those northwest quadrants of four or five intersections, there's, there's that concern. It all depends on how close the vehicle is to the intersection and what kind of vehicle it is. And so it may be more of a systemic thing to look at stretching the no parking zones a little bit to the north of each of those intersections. So that'll be up in front of Public Works for proper consideration.
All right. Anybody have any discussion or questions for the committee that's looked at that today? All right. Thank you, Darla, for that update. And thank you, guys, for looking at it and see what we can do down the road here. F, schedule a public hearing for a conditional use permit to operate a commercial kennel in the B-two Business District at three-three-one-zero Forty-Fifth Street, submitted by Stephanie Mueller, D. B. A. Lucky Paws Pet Boutique owner. We're looking for a motion to schedule that public hearing on Monday, August second two thousand twenty-one, at six o'clock. That's what the action item we're doing tonight. So do I have a motion to schedule that public hearing?
I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing on Monday.
Thank you, Jay. Perfect. Didn't mean to cut you off, I'm sorry. For Monday, August second?
August second, six P. M.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mark. And any discussion regarding this one? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Go to G, resolution adopting amendment number two to TID number ten to support rehabilitation of the former Paragon property. I'm looking for a motion to waive that reading and adopt that resolution. But let's go ahead and get that motion, and then we'll look at the, we'll have some conversation. Do I have a motion to waive the reading?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. That's number, by the way, I think it's number one oh seven in your packages. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Jeff. Any discussion or anything you want to have anybody address?
I'll do a quick summary, but I can, you can, I'll call on Elizabeth if there's any backup. TID ten has been around since August of two thousand fourteen, when it was created by action of the city council. The initial intent was to assist with redevelopment of the former Hamilton Warehouse property, which is now Holy Families Lakefront Clinic. Expenditures there included city funding for construction of Lakefront Way, the new street connecting out to Memorial Drive. There is an allowance for potentially assisting with assessment costs against the Holy Family property for possible special assessments on reconstruction of Roosevelt. The city also assisted with some of the site development costs. We, the council then approved, I think the next year, it's in here, the first amendment to TID number ten to assist with rehabilitation of the Edgewater Terrace Apartments, where we have a multi-year obligation to provide a twenty thousand dollar annual payment as an interest rate subsidy. That was on borrowing for a major rehab of those affordable housing apartments that was done, oh, gosh, about five years ago. While the original plan for TID number ten anticipated possible assistance for redevelopment of the Paragon property, that was in the form of infrastructure assistance, possible upgrades to water and sewer mains in the area. It did not address possible direct developer grants to anyone doing redevelopment of the Paragon property. The request for such assistance is an integral part of the current option agreement between the city and AIM Manitowoc LLC, and may well be an important component in any redevelopment of that property. So that's, that's the main thrust of this amendment, allowing for up to two hundred fifty thousand dollars in pay-as-you-go, assistance as a developer grant, contingent upon financial feasibility. And the contingent on financial feasibility part is really going to depend on what sort of value comes back onto the tax rolls and is created through the renovation of that facility, because right now it's tax exempt. The city took it back through foreclosure. The pro forma that's in this plan anticipates a, a value of at least one point eight million dollars added back over three years, so it's shown in increments of six hundred thousand a year. If any assistance is provided to a developer rehabilitating that complex, that would have to also be the subject of a written development agreement that would come before this council for action. So this would, if approved by the council tonight, formalize that there's another tool there to assist with redeveloping the Paragon property out of TID ten if sufficient revenue is generated from the redevelopment of that property.
Any other questions for Greg on this one? Mark?
I have a really question, but a comment. I really like Mr. Buckley and the way Elizabeth designed it to make it flexible, that indicates any developer, either now or in the future, that wishes to use our assistance, financial ability to this property.
Yes, this is not developer-specific. Good point.
Any other questions? Okay, this is a resolution. Jamie, I believe we have a motion and a second, so it's now time for a roll call. Thank you.
Bill Leclair.
Aye.
Jay Remicker.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunis.
Aye.
Adam Husky.
Aye.
Kurt Andrews.
Aye.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
Jeff Dalkey.
Aye.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Darla Leclair.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Hey, great. Thank you. Moving on to H, a resolution creating and adopting boundaries for TID number fifteen to support redevelopment of the former Hanson de Flores property. And that's number one oh nine in your packages tonight. Again, I'm looking for a motion and a second, then we'll go into the resolution. Do I have a motion?
Actually, Mr. President, if I might, it's, it's probably a minor thing, but I would ask that you consider taking those two up in reverse order. Item I, the resolution adopting the project plan, which is on page one oh nine. No, it's not either.
One-ten.
One-ten of your packet. Yeah. Reference is, is referenced in the second resolution, saying that the council has on this day approved a project plan. So I would ask you, you first act on item I, the resolution adopting the project plan. Sorry about that, but...
Okay, so we're going to strike the, can we strike the motion and second, and go back to I?
If there are no objections.
Do that, Mr.?
No objections.
With no objections? Okay, we're going to switch a rule. We're going to go to I, resolution adopting project plan for TID number fifteen to support the redevelopment of the former Hanson de Flores property. I'm looking for a motion to waive that reading and adopt that resolution, but let's start with a motion and a second, and then get into discussion. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Darla. Do I have a second?
I'll second it, Kurt.
Thank you, Jeff, or Bill. You can put Jeff and Bill together if you like. You want to go through any more detail regarding this?
Actually, I'd like to invite our community development director, Ms. Rungy, up to, to describe what, what's entailed in this plan. I would just introduce it by saying, the former Hanson de Flores property has been a priority redevelopment site in the city for a long time. It's flagged in our two thousand and ten comprehensive plan as a priority redevelopment site. Part of the site got redeveloped a couple of years ago with the new Dollar General store, but the larger portion of the site has remained on the market. So we're very excited about the proposal which, for redevelopment, which Elizabeth can address.
Sure. TID fifteen that we're proposing for your approval tonight is a blight elimination tid. The plan that you will be approving, the project plan, is for three thousand Forest Avenue that we've identified. The goal of this, and the purpose of this TID, is to support the redevelopment and blight elimination of the area that is at three thousand Forest Avenue, which is one parcel only. And the impetus behind this is that the city was approached by a group of developers for a proposal of new construction for multifamily market rate development. And this proposal includes approximately forty-four units for new residential development. As, as Greg mentioned, this is a priority site within the city, so it supports orderly development, and another location that would be eliminating blight in the proposed boundary area. So the estimated project construction expenditures are about seven million dollars, and they have requested financial assistance to help support that in the amount of one point three million. And that is what it shows in your pro forma, that the assistance expenditures and an estimated value, which we always bring down a little bit lower, of four point two. With those projections in the pro forma, we definitely reach the recovery of these expenditures when they, when they are forecasted out by Baird. So we have four point two million as the construction increment, because we do a reduction of that based on what we think our assessed return value might be, and giving them six hundred and fifty thousand dollars as a developer grant and six hundred and fifty thousand dollars as a pay-as-you-go TIF. So again, the grant, developer grant would be spelled out in a developers' agreement, so those terms would come before you for your approval. So that would not be done without you reviewing that first. So again, this would not happen but for the TIF. These expenditures and that type of assistance would not be able to happen unless the city does create a TID to help with those assistance to facilitate this type of development. So the but-for test also is something that we would be meeting for this creation. So that's the summary of that. The JRB has already met once, the Joint Review Board, and tomorrow it's planned that we would have the second meeting to review this as well, the other taxing entities. That's the summary, if you have any questions.
Element would be a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units, all market rate. This is not subsidized or tax credit assisted housing.
Three different buildings, correct?
Three buildings, yes.
A total of three, yes.
Adam, question?
So right now, with the agreement that's in front of us, it's going to be up to one point three million dollars, because we do not have an agreement in front of us. Is that correct?
We, we don't have the agreement signed yet. That would be the next step. We've each exchanged draft agreements for them to look at that we have put together, but that hasn't been done yet. No.
Right, so as we look at it, it's up to, it's not, we're not, can't guarantee anything because we don't have an agreement. Is that correct?
Right, but we have planned for those expenditures at one point three.
If identified the need at one point three, the TIF cash flow is fine. The ultimate decision on any of the details of the development agreement is up to council action at a subsequent meeting.
Including the percentage that we give upfront? Is that correct?
Correct. Correct. We, we've had discussions about withholding some or all of the upfront cash payment until after the first building is completed and ready for occupancy. There has been some discussion about some site evaluation and preliminary development costs. It would be, I'll say, a relatively modest part of that, six fifty. And again, this is very recent discussion. The developer might be interested in seeing if those can be advanced, but the bulk, and again, that's up to council. But as proposed, the bulk of the cash grant would still be withheld until after completion of that first building.
Any other questions? Mark?
I have two questions. Greg, Elizabeth, first of all, compliments to both of you because you worked hard on this. This is going to be a great addition.
We need it. Absolutely.
Really, good credit to both of you. My first question is that in the matrix, we did conservatively reevaluate from the seven to the four million. All the numbers work out, so I mean, this plan. Secondly, this is my opinion, I know, I'd like to stress that we should encourage, we can't mandate it do it, but encourage them to look at a gift that will never be replaced for this community, and that's the wetlands behind the property, which you can't use, and giving that to maybe somebody who could manage it effectively, it'll still be valuable for the residents to see it, but that would be a double win for our community if we could...
There, there has been some dialogue on that, and that will, we'll, we'll pick up on that theme, assuming we have a TIF district in place and are negotiating a development agreement.
I know we can't mandate, but what a gift, something we can't replace.
Yep. It's a, it's a beautiful area of wooded wetland along the river.
It's a beautiful site and a beautiful addition to our community.
Any other questions regarding this?
By the way, the plan does identify a very modest amount, but the potential for up to fifty thousand dollars for related public infrastructure improvements. As we foresee it, there's plenty of infrastructure there to serve this project. And by the way, when the city constructed the so-called Karen Pond off to the west of Forest Avenue, down by Karen Net, actually, part of that site was purchased from Karen Net, apart from Hanson, the Hanson family, there was provision that that pond was designed to handle the stormwater treatment associated with this redevelopment. So that was, that was pretty much baked in when the city purchased that. And so there won't be the need for development of on-site stormwater facilities for this. Our engineering department and McMahon have run the calc's, and that pond can handle, within its capacity, that additional development. But if there's some small ticket item, like pedestrian crossing improvement, so you can get safely to a family restaurant at the credit union mass, or Lutheran service further up the street, you know, might be able to do something along those lines.
Great. Jay?
Just wondering, is the Hanson property sold to a developer already, or is it just talks?
There is a purchase agreement in place with closing anticipated, based on what we've been told, within the next month.
So I have a follow-up question on that, then. What is the anticipated, I don't want to hold your feet to the fire, because Adam brought it up. When is the anticipated development agreement we'll possibly see at council on this project?
We have had discussions of it. I would say it could be as soon as the first meeting in August. I would say next Monday for the work session, but that meeting is already stacking up pretty good. But we, at least insofar as what staff thought was appropriate and prudent to be in the agreement. We're waiting on any final feedback from the developer's attorneys, but we are very close.
Great. So it's moving at a pretty fast pace. We should see something this year. Good.
Yes, we're hopeful fall goes well.
Good. Okay, so we are looking for a, we've got a lot of discussion. If there's no more discussion, we're going to go right into a roll call on this resolution adopting the project plan. And right now, it's a project plan adoption for TID number fifteen to support the redevelopment of the former Hanson de Flores property. Jamie?
Bonnie Shimilunis.
Aye.
Adam Husky.
Aye.
Kurt Andrews.
Aye.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
Jeff Dalkey.
Aye.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Darla Leclair.
Aye.
Bill Leclair.
Aye.
Jay Remicker.
Aye.
To be great news to have some construction, and new construction and housing for, for citizens who are here and citizens who want to come here. We're going to go back to H, and it's a resolution creating and adopting the boundaries for TID number fifteen to support the redevelopment of the former Hanson de Flores property. So we had a motion and a second before. We're going to need to repeat that. So I need a motion to waive the reading. It's again, number one oh nine on our deck, to waive the reading and adopt that resolution. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Darla, do a second.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this one? Greg, you want to touch on this, or is it pretty self-explanatory?
No, it's pretty much, we, a lot of the narrative, we just provided. The only other thing that occurred to me in the last minute or so is, it, it's worth noting that we, while this district is very conservatively drawn, and the only thing in the district is the development parcel, it does provide for expenditures within a half-mile radius for, say, for those modest public improvements we talked about, or if in the future, things are going well and there's a need, and there's a possibility of an amendment to, for some additional appropriate public infrastructure spending, that sort of thing. So if you, as you look through it, you probably noted that half-mile radius is mapped as well.
Great. Okay, roll call. Any other discussion before we go to roll call? I'm sorry, I didn't pause it long enough here. Okay, roll call.
Jay Remicker.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunis.
Aye.
Adam Husky.
Aye.
Kurt Andrews.
Aye.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
Jeff Dalkey.
Aye.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Darla Leclair.
Aye.
Bill Leclair.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, guys. And Greg, information only?
Just a reminder that we have the monthly work session next Monday, the twenty-sixth. We'll be talking, among other things, about path forward on the Central Park West project. We'll be talking about two other things we talked about earlier tonight. I'm sorry. The question that had come about city ordinance on the backyard storage, or the storage canopies, and I'm sorry, I'm going blank on the third issue. Oh, the swim club request for funding. Yep. Sure to be two or three other items, but that's what I know of right now.
Thank you.
That is all I have.